All right, well, let's call the meeting to order. We will call the public hearing of the 2020-2021 Stevens Point School District Budget Hearing for Monday, October 26, 2020, to order. Notice is hereby given at 6:00 PM on Monday, October 26, 2020. The Stevens Point Area Public School District School Board will hold the public hearing of the 2020-2021 Stevens Point School District Budget. So we will move into roll call.
Ms. Baker?
Here.
Mr. Pope?
Here.
Mr. Ebel?
Here.
Ms. Va?
Anne, can you hear us? Anne?
You're muted.
Anne, you're muted.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Can you hear us? We just called you for roll.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Portson?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Uller?
Here.
And Mr. Wade is excused.
All right, we will move into item three, which is the presentation of the budget overview, and we will turn that over to Tom Owens.
Good evening. I have my bottle of water with me to keep my dry throat at bay. And I will begin by sharing the document this evening of our budget report. Does that come up okay?
Yes.
Okay. The document that we're going to be going through, I'm not going to take us through the entire budget diagram, rather, I've picked up various highlights and different aspects of the work that I think will be of interest to you. I always start out with a cycle here of our budget because a lot of folks don't understand that this really is almost a multi-year project here. We begin the allocation phase actually in November and then start for next year's budget, 2021-2022, next month. But it begins in November and then we move into a budget building phase through January and April, and then to the assembly phase through April and June, where we go off with the preliminary budget in June. And then we make adjustments as the details unfold from the state. And we get to this particular point in the adoption phase in October, late October. The blackboard you see here is also found on page eight of your budget book, et cetera, that you have either been providing copies of or you have in front of you. And it shows that the levy is just over 40.5 million, but it's actually down 1.6% from last year, some 656,000, a result of an increased amount in state aid relative to the other dimensions of our budget. Also of note is our equalized value increased just under 4%. And we are just slightly under $5 billion would be dollars of equalized value in our district. When we put this all together, we're looking at a mill rate of 18 cents, which is a decrease of 47 cents. And I believe, I'm just doing this from memory, but I believe it was either $8.17, I think it was $8.17 before we went to the referendum. So we're right back where we were in terms of that. It's kind of rather interesting. When we look at the surveys, equalized tax rates over time, red line represents the state average taxes and the move which is even more. As you can see, we've remained, we've made one exception possibly, for close to 30 years, we've remained well below the state average on our tax rate. So I think that the public, who really think about this, I think that the school board has been an extremely good steward of them. I have a lot to be proud of in that aspect. This particular graph shows five large districts in our FIA Conference, Everest, Marshfield, Point, Wausau, and Wisconsin Rapids. These were the various years, the last few years, and you can see the dip that we've had, and we've remained consistently below the other school districts of comparable size in our conference. Currently this year for 2021 school year, Wausau will be performing a mill rate of $10.29, Rapids 973, T.C. Everest 970, Marshfield $2.21, and we will be lower again at $8.18. This data is the last available data from the, that is audited, it goes through 2018, 19 school year, but it's still very relevant. This red line depicts what's the state TDC. TDC stands for Total District Cost Per Member. There are different ways to measure cost per member, just like there are different ways to look at third party accounts. This particular measure, the TDC, is the most comprehensive and includes all funds and all activities going on in the school district. So this is where the average state spending is, this is where our school district is, Stevens Point. And this graph between here is approximately $2,000, and when you have 7,000 kids, that figures out to be $14 million. For us to spend at just the state average, we would have to be having our budget increased by $14 million, which could be more than needed. We could probably lose a couple of million, but 14 is way beyond anything that I believe would be on. This slide represents the tax levy by community. You can find that on page nine of your budget book if you want a clearer image. And in this particular case, this is showing the 40.5 million that is distributed throughout the various municipalities. I'm going to be talking about the shift that's going to take place among the municipalities. I call it this piece of pie. These pieces of pie, if you will, change from one year to the next when you look at this as equalized value. So it's not a fixed amount. In other words, Hull, Stockton, and the Village of Clover, they are not always the same percentage of our district one year to the next because that's based on the size of equalized value. So these pieces actually change in size in relationship to one another, and that causes a shift in the tax burden. And this is an example of what I'm talking about. This is the change in equalized value. And you can see it's quite a significant change here from last year to this year. You've got Clover, Hull, Stockton, and the Tower of Poder going up 8%, 7%, and 6%. Our total district only went up 4%, but you've got Stockton, Hull, excuse me, going up twice that amount. This is 2019-20, and this is 2021. And you can see the difference it is in the change in equalized from two years. Last year, Sherry was a big draw, and Hull was down. Now Hull is up. So as these shifts take place, some of these municipalities will take up a little lottery share of the total overall levy. And through experience in years, I've found that these percentage changes in the second to the last column oftentimes come very close to one's actual levy bill or tax bill when you get it. And so as it varies from 4% above or below that, you might see a little bit more of an increase. So folks at Hull are going to see a little bit larger increase in the school levy portion than, say, people in Grant or Village of Clover or Whitey. That's just the nature of how it works out. So this is the actual change in levy, showing that shifting that takes place. So as you look at Hull, for example, it's now at almost 3%. And that's happening, of course, because they grew almost 8% in equalized value, so they're gaining a little bit larger portion of the overall levy. So even though our levy went down 1.6, there is 3, and that's 4.6 right there, so they're eating up that difference from the prior year. Now, this is just an interesting point of information. This is $1.3 billion. This levy is included in our total overall levy of 40.5 million, but I broke it out, as I do each year since it started, so you could have a comprehensive view of what's happening. We are required by the state to levy this $1.6 million. It is not for public school purposes. It does not remain with us. Instead, we levy this and then wait for the money to come in through the various collections much later in the year, actually starting next year. And then at the final payment, the of state aid, the state withholds this money from us. So we are actually just acting as a conduit by raising the levy among here, collecting the money, and then the state shorts us an identical amount at the end of our fiscal year. And basically, it's just a transfer of funds from the local taxpayer. And the money is then used within the community to support local private schools as opposed to the public schools. So even though this is in our taxes and it's being collected and identified as a public school tax, 1.5, 1.6 million, or 32 cents of our levy is really not a public school levy at all. It began in 1516 for about $360,000, and is now up to about $1.6 million. So a little interesting piece of history. This table shows the number of K8s and 912 students in the program. This is the total of those involved in the Wisconsin Parental Choice Program, and these are the numbers involved in the special needs scholarship program that resides within our district. This is information on third party and open enrollment at our last school board meeting. I have this in considerable detail, so I have plans this evening to go into this. Other than to just remind, there is a slight decline. This may look a little steeper. This is a matter of scale. If these numbers were further apart, the line would be flatter. Of interest really is the gap. And this data up here describes that gap. Right now, this gap between the enrollment out and enrollment in is a ratio of 2.5, meaning that there are two and a half students enrolling out compared to one student coming in. I'm going to briefly cover the revenue limit worksheet. It's important for a number of reasons, because it sets the parameters for what we're allowed to levy, but also I think it's very important that all school board members really have a fundamental understanding of what's taking place. This is pretty small print. What I'm going to do is I'm going to set a series of slides and going to break down this upper left portion of this first page. That amount shows last year's revenue limit, and this, excuse me, this net cost or net down revenue limit is going to go from here to line number one on the right side. You'll see that in a moment. The area on the left is a worksheet, a working area where we derive certain numbers on enrollment, equalized value, and some exemptions. And then I'll move this over to the right-hand side with a series of screens, and it'll just fall down through this worksheet, and you'll see how this comes together. Okay, the upper right, this $73.8 million is going to appear in a couple of slides over here at the top of the right-hand side, but that's where it comes from, and this is provided from the state in the previous school year. This is that worksheet area I talked about in the left, lower-up hand side. This area constitutes the previous three-year rolling average. You've probably heard that term before with respect to the revenue limit. The 2018 and 19 school year, when they averaged together, created 7,326 students in the count. Now, the current three-year rolling average, it's rolled, as we talked, 2017 out, we bring 18 and 19, and then we introduced 2020, that as a new rolling average. We enter the data for the summer school, which usually is around 217 or 15 students, but because of COVID, it was quite an anemic summer school, we only had 74, a college year, which gave us only 30 FTE at 40%. Normally, we have, you know, around 87 to that council, and it's a significant blow, plus our actual enrollment, FTE enrollment declined. So when you add these three numbers together, our three-year rolling average is 7218, well, lots of 108 students. Now, because our enrollment's going down, we're entitled for one year and one year only, a declining enrollment exemption. And when you multiply our 2021 revenue limit, remember, $1,283 times that 108, we did a little over 1.1 million. That's going to appear on the worksheet to the right. I haven't talked this much in a week, so. Okay, we're in the upper right corner now. That's the amount that was brought over from last year, when divided by the eight membership average, that's the amount that we have per member. And we had $179, which the state has authorized per member, and we come up with a total of Notice that the minimum that the state is setting is $10,000. We're only $263 above the state minimum, so that's one of the reasons that we are $14 million below state average as well. This little table here is just giving you a visual of what's happened with this, how the per-member limit over the years. It used to be quite a bit higher in preliminary, and then in 2010, during Act 10, this red line represents the negative that we experienced. And then it was up to about $50 or so, $100 for three years, and then we went for four years with no increase at all, and then the last year is showing here about $150, $160, $170. This is the numerical value of these columns, so that you can follow along if you wish. So we take those numbers, we follow them down, and that's where we get an initial revenue limit amount, but we haven't included any exemptions yet. As we fall down through, we have a number of possible things, prior year carryover, transfer service, and a number of other things. The only thing we have is a small amount of transfer service. This came about through costs that were transferred to us from other students entering our district that caused this increase, or service that was being provided to them and was transferred to us. Working further down the spreadsheet, we now enter non-recurring exemptions. This means it's not something that happens every year. This is something that happens, okay, it happens once in a while, it's one year, possibly for a few years, two or three, depending on what kind of an exemption it is, and then goes away. This entire section is that way. So the declining enrollment exemption, which I talked about earlier, came over from that left side due to our decline. Our energy efficient comes in here. This helps offset the cost of principal and interest for our debt service related to revenue limits on exemptions and the energy consumptions of projects that we've done. This represents the amounts that we have to levy for the private school voucher program that I just recently talked about, as well as the special needs scholarship program. Add those all up, it comes to $4.7 million. When you add that together here, the revenue limit now is up to $78.8 million. So now we have to look at what our general aid is. We didn't get this till October 15, 10 o'clock in the morning. We also then got, at the same time, what our exempt computer aid is and what our exempt personal property aid is, and you add all of these up. And these total 43 million subtracted up from our revenue limit, that's our maximum of the levy for funds 10, 38, and 41. $35.7 million. We are not operating the fund 41. Okay. Now, that 34, 5.7 is our maximum. No, we had 38 fund activity of $2 million, so that plus the general fund cannot exceed So those are our two amounts there. Then we have referendum approved debt, community surplus levy, and a small amount for property tax charge back. When you add this amount, which is the 10 fund and the 30 fund, plus the other funds together, you get the $40.5 million. Then when those divided by equalized value, you see our $8.18 embedded in that number there. That's how it's done, and that's how it's worked through. Page three of the revenue limit report is what we've done. We have levy to our maximum, we're not holding back, we're giving it anything we've got, and just going to make it happen. So now let's look at our actual budget. Now you've seen some of the big numbers that we have used to arrive at this budget. We have put together a budget, we're based on the revenues. We're expecting in the general fund about $90.5 million and expenditures of about $91.6 million. Just slightly over $1 million in deficit. I'll point out, last year, we expected to be about $983,000, something like that, in deficit, so this is right about where we were last year before the coronavirus thing in the spring kind of messed up all the budgeting. And then the other budgets fall through here, are just the special projects funds. The only reason of the difference here is 21 fund. Our debt service bond, of course, has to be what it is in order to do the principal interest payments. Our projects fund is all the construction that's going on and that's been approved. These numbers, of course, are estimates, so they'll change, but it doesn't really matter if they do, because we just spend what we have to spend on the projects as the project went along. And if we've estimated a little higher or a little low, it doesn't cause any harm, the money is there at home for it, because we've still got another year beyond this of activity going on. Food service is balanced out. Cross fund is, that it's operating as it's supposed to. Community, oops, I'm sorry, community fund is planned as we have, et cetera, for this. And we have no packages, service, co-op programs going out. We have a total budget of $153 million when you add all of these funds together. This shows the transfer amount from the 27 fund, and keep that at balanced across fund. And I should also point out that the $11 million represents the local cost or the local share of the cost of special education in Stevens Point. So the overall activity of the funds went down 1.44%. This is a recap of the levies, showing the 40.5 and the loss or the decline of 1.6% of levy from the prior year. And we're in the total of all funds of just under $136 million in revenue, which brings us to this point. This is, I won't spend much time on this, it's in your book on page 22. It just shows you what's going on with the activity and the tax, the tax of parental finance districts in the three, four municipalities with their districts that operate them, and they have been all quite successful in what they've been doing. We've gained a lot of value, and that'll be in our advantage down the road. So that's in summary of how this all came together. And this is the motion that in the board meeting, my memo, would be recommended to move the budget that's shown on pages 12 and 13, and these dollar amounts for expenditure, and this dollar amount for revenue, and then another motion to set the levy at this amount and authorize us to disseminate program levy certifications, the 401s to the clerks, et cetera. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Tom. So the board, the board will be handling this matter at the, in our regular board meeting coming up. This is the public hearing portion, so our next item on the agenda after Tom's presentation of the budget is to open up the budget for public comments. At the March 19, 2020 special school board meeting, the Stevens Point Area Public School District passed a motion to suspend school board policy 0167.3, public participation at board meetings for the duration of the public health crisis. Members of the public may provide public comment pertaining only to specific items on the meeting agenda at email@comments@pointschools.net. Did, Carlin, did we receive any public comments prior to the deadline?
No comments were received.
Okay, so no comments were received. So we have no public comments with respect to the public hearing of the school district budget. Is there anyone present this evening? No one is present. So we will move to adjournment of the public hearing. Could I have a motion for adjournment?
Go move.
Motion by Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed with nay. The public hearing is closed. We will now move into the special school board meeting for Monday, October 26, 2020. And we will note that due to the public health And we will note that due to the public health emergency and the need to limit gatherings, we are strongly encouraging members of the public to attend school board meetings remotely. We do have those set up live stream and are hoping that the public is able to access this evening. We want to apologize for our prior meeting. We did have some issues with the live stream, and so we've actually created a redundancy plan for us tonight just to make sure that we have this board meeting available to members of the public. With that, I will ask for the roll call and verification of quorum.
Ms. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Pope.
Here.
Mr. Ebel.
Here.
Ms. Va.
Here.
Ms. Portson.
Ms. Portson.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Rano. Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Erler.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
And Mike Wade is excused.
And Mr. Wade is excused.
Okay, we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note for any members of the public that might be here that we are all socially distanced, we're all wearing masks. The governor's order does allow a member, if they are speaking and they feel that they need to remove the mask in order to be better understood, to remove it. So especially if people are making longer presentations this evening, they may be removing their mask, and that will be, that would be legal pursuant to the governor's order. We will move into public comments. And again, I will note that at the March 19th, 2020 special school board meeting, the Stevens Point area public school district passed a motion to suspend school board policy 0167.3, public participation at board meetings for the duration of the public health crisis. Members of the public may provide public comment pertaining only to specific items on the meeting agenda via email at comments@pointschool.net. Carlin, did we receive any public comments with respect to agenda items this evening?
None were received.
Okay. And there is no one present here from the public for comments either. So we will move into our consent agenda, and the consent agenda includes the minutes of our October 12th, 2020 board meeting and also employment recommendations. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yeah. So move.
A motion by Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ebel. Any discussion or questions on the consent agenda items? Hearing none? All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with nay? The motion is approved. We will move into item six, business services. Item A is approval of the 2020-21 budget and levy. Tom has provided a comprehensive run-through of what is proposed this evening. Now is the opportunity, if any board members would have any questions or comments with respect to this matter.
I have questions.
Yep, okay.
If I ask a couple?
Go ahead, G.
Forgive me if I'm asking questions everybody else knows the answer to, but I don't, and can help me out. When I look at, I look at the, every column of, well, with mill rates, what we spend per student, things like that, we're at the bottom in every column. And Tom, I was wondering if you could let me, you know, explain why we are. I know it's, it probably comes from something years back, but why did we end up at the bottom in all this? I'm looking specifically at a chart on page six, the one with the mill rate.
I can answer that. In 1993, revenue limits were imposed, and school districts basically had a freeze at their current level of spending. And at that particular point in time, Stevens Point was the lowest spending school district. That was a historical issue in Stevens Point, like a lot of other schools. However, that was the freeze in 1993, and then when revenue limits were established, school boards then didn't have any control over increases unless they went to referendum to increase that, which we did about three years ago. And you'll recall when we went three years ago, after we calculated our numbers, we knew we'd continue to be one of the lowest spending school districts. However, we asked from the community what we thought was what we needed. But it really is the whole issue of revenue limits. There's districts that were locked in at 13,000 per student. Those districts today spend, still spend a lot of money.
So we've always been at the bottom since the mid 1990s?
Yes.
Then the other question I had is, the chart just below that on page six, I know we were low, and we started because we got, we got kind of caught in the mid 90s, and we've been low since, but the gap between what we spend per student and the statewide average is, seems to be increasing. And to me, it seemed like we should be staying the same, but we're increasing our gap.
If we're, again, it goes back to the freeze. Districts that go to referendum to increase theirs would create that district's gap. We've only gone to referendum to exceed and pass it, I believe, just that one time. Other districts may have gone to referendum several times over the course of that particular time, which would then increase their districts and again create that larger gap.
Then the last question I had was, maybe Tom could help with this, and you too, Craig. I mean, COVID affected us the last third of the year. Do you have any feeling at all as to whether that was a budget plus or minus?
It was a budget minus to end the year, Tom.
Could you repeat the question for me?
So, so, Matt, it's about the, it's actually about the, how we-
Did you take your mask off?
Yep. It's about how we wound up with our budget last year, Tom. I know you made a presentation at our last meeting about that, but where were we at the end of the year in terms of, the end of the year? I know it was a deficit amount, and you walked through how COVID, due to COVID, there were a number of expenses that were more than we anticipated, and there were also some expenses that were less, but ultimately we did wind up with the deficit at year end. And so G is just asking about that.
Well, we projected at this time, the year before, above 980,000 deficit, as I mentioned. And then a number of dynamics occurred with COVID. We would have actually ended up the year, I didn't look up the exact number before tonight, but it was about roughly 45,000 negative in deficit. However, I did point out that that also occurred because I moved about 275, 280,000 dollars into the 46 fund, which I had to do before the end of July because that's the deadline, but we weren't done with our audit for another month. As a result, with some audit adjustments that were made, we wound up at about 46,000 deficit. Out of 100 and some million, that's basically breaking even. But if it had, if we kept everything without moving it over, we pointed around a quarter of a million to the good. So because of COVID, we had a large amount of expenditures that weren't made, and we likewise had a large number of revenue amounts that didn't come in that corresponded with it. But obviously, we had a greater reduction in expense. So we performed okay. We performed well with the last budget as an end result. What will happen this year, of course, you know, is again another guess. I always say the budget's there, we know it's wrong. I should clarify by that, I mean, we've put together what we believe is as accurate a budget as we can at this point, but I encourage people not to fixate on the numbers themselves in a budget because they will be very dynamic and they will change over the course of the next, the rest of this year, and we will wind up with something different than what we're projecting. We just don't know exactly the degree of that.
An example, G, when COVID hit, we saved a significant amount of money on substitute teachers and fuel regarding transportation, for example.
Yeah. Well, thanks for the answer. I mean, I don't want to say it benefited the budget for something so awful, but I was just wondering how we came out.
Basically, even when we went into it with about a $900,000 deficit.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other board members with any questions about the budget? I guess I just want to note, I'm gonna take my mask off. I just want to note, you know, as G pointed out, and as these graphs point out, and it's something that it's really important for the community to be aware of, we are literally at the bottom with respect to our surrounding districts as to what we're paying per cost for students and the revenue that comes into that district. And that, on an ongoing basis, poses significant pressure for our district on its budget. And I guess the one thing I want to point out is this past year, as, you know, I know the public is aware, you know, or three years ago, we had to go to referendum. We passed a 3.5 million recurring operational referendum, ongoing, to make up some of that huge deficit and lower amount that we, as a district, had been seeing. But this past spring, we also, as a board, approved over 1.7 million of that amount recurring to embed in and support our teachers' compensation and our staff compensation for this district because we were seeing a situation where a number of our amazing teachers were being recruited from other communities and other districts that were able to pay significantly more than we, as a district, are able to pay because we do bring in less money. And I think that's, that's a, that's a real point for us to make. I mean, there's, there's, there's an importance to being frugal, there's an importance to being efficient, there's an importance to being careful with taxpayers' dollars and being cognizant of and responsible for spending. But there's also an importance for our district for now and for the future, moving forward, having sufficient revenue to be able to keep pace with our competition. And it's become more and more post Act 10, and that's the reality. So as Craig pointed out, we are, we have gone to referendum once, and a huge part of that was, again, to be able to maintain our place at the bottom, but just gets a little bit more spending money. And the districts around us, many of them, most, have gone to referendum at least twice. And we know that, you know, because that's our only option with the spending freeze to add additional revenue to our budget, that we, as a community, have to be aware that that is going to be a constant reality for our community unless and until our state legislature comes up with, frankly, a more rational way of providing more equalized funding for districts throughout our state. Because right now, again, we're at the bottom, and we've been there forever because we were at the bottom when the state came in and imposed the freeze. The board can't do anything about that. That's, that's a state function. And so I just, you know, I, the budget, I appreciate everything, Tom, you know, that you, that we've put together, but it's the reality that this is, this is, this is what we live with as, as school boards. Go ahead, Tom.
Well, you raised an interesting point that I want to clarify for all the board members and any community members that are listening. You mentioned the fact that we went out for referendum for recurring authority, 3 million, whatever, okay? We're losing 1.1 million of that authority because of the decline in enrollment.
Yep.
But that's, that's going to be a challenge for us. We're a million in the deficit, we're losing a million from that enrollment, and essentially is coming off of that authority. So while we had that authority for three and a half, it doesn't stay forever, it changes depending on what happens with the enrollment, and we just lost 1.1 million of that authority. So I just wanted to point that out.
Well, aren't we, isn't there something going on in the legislature that's, the DPI is asking the legislature to not use this year's count?
There's currently, there's currently, some legislators are passing a budget, they're passing around some proposals to allow districts statewide to be able to use last year's pupil counts because this isn't just a problem in Point. Districts all around the state have seen a decline in enrollment due to COVID, and there are kids that just aren't in school right now. And so, but that, that has not even gone to hearing yet, G, so whether or not the state's going to do anything about it.
Well, if, if, say, that happened, would that be the 1.1 million that Tom is talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And I guess the point underlying, Tom, what you said, we, as a district, aren't going to be able to find 1.2 million in savings. The reality with COVID right now is that we have limits in terms of our classrooms as to how many students we have in there. And so the fact that there are fewer students right now, in a, not good way, but in a reality, has decreased the number of kids in some of our classrooms, but, but our costs are the same. I mean, we, we're not going to be able to eliminate staff or eliminate any sort of cost anywhere near 1.2 million to be able to make up for that amount. So I appreciate, Tom, I appreciate you bringing up that, that point. Do any other board members have any comments or questions? I guess with that, I'd look for a motion to approve the 2021 budget as shown on pages 12 and 13 of the 2021 budget report for expenditures of all funds at 153,385,865 and revenues for all funds at 135,595,274.
Matt, you made a mistake on that number, the last number. You said 135.
Yeah.
135, but you didn't say 595.
Oh, 135, 595, 274. Thank you, Chris. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Scott. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Scott, this is Barb.
Second by Barb. Any discussion or questions? I will have Carlin call the roll.
Ms. Va. Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Mr. Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Erler.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
I am now looking for a motion to approve and set the 2020 levy at 40,507,662 and to authorize the administration to disseminate the appropriate levy certifications. Do I have that motion?
It's all moved.
Motion by Ebel, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Baker. Any discussion or questions on that motion? And I will have Carlyn call the roll.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Ebel.
Yes.
Mr. Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Portson.
Yes.
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Ms. Va.
Yes.
Ms. Ehrler.
Yes.
And motion passes.
Thank you, Carlyn.
You're welcome.
We will move into item 11A, the superintendent's report.
We've been listing, excuse me, listing the COVID-19 update on my report since March. And actually, I think the majority of what we're going to be talking about for the COVID-19 update for my report is going to be in a presentation following this. I would like to talk briefly about winter athletics. For our school district, you'll recall that we canceled, or I shouldn't say that, we postponed fall athletics to the new fall athletic season, which will be actually mid to the end of winter. I am in constant communication now, talking about winter athletics with our administrative team, specifically John Volendorf and Mike Blair, as well as our cabinet. And I have been meeting several times a week with the Valley Conference superintendents. As a conference, we are continuing to move forward with planning for winter athletics. No decisions have been made as it relates to whether or not we will participate. It is my hope that we will participate. We are working out a lot of details about who will be able to attend specific events, and if we do have people attend, will it be just home, will it be away, will it be just a few numbers? You'll recall also, last spring or fall, we were not able to use Gerky Field, which is owned by the city. Mike Blair has indicated to me that the city will, however, allow us to use Willett Arena for hockey. So more to come on that when final decisions are made, I will get that information out. I will note that a study came out of UW-Madison just last Thursday, I'll have Carlyn send this to everyone, and it states UW study results suggest participation in high school sports is not associated with increased risk of COVID. The article itself does have a tremendous amount of data in there, so I'll get that out to you. So more to come on what winter athletics may look like. I'll take questions, knowing that most of what I think's on your mind might be coming up, but if there is a specific question for me, and if we don't hit on it in our next presentation, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions. I'm going to ask Cory to come right up here.
Can I do it from here if allowed?
And we'll move into the item B, which is the operations status update, school year 2020, 2021.
Okay, I'm gonna get a couple things set up here, and I've got the A-team back here to bail me out if it doesn't go as planned. So, let's see here.
Can everyone hear Cory okay?
Caleb, can you hear me?
Caleb?
Yes, I can, lovingly.
Uh-oh. Hold on.
I can hear you too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, let me preface this by stating that when we created a plan in June, there was a tremendous amount of thought put into it, and we had mentioned many times, please be patient and please be flexible, because we don't, we only know what we know, but we do know that we're going to learn a lot as we continue to move forward. Our current model has been working okay, it's been working, I will say, well. We are concerned about how long we can sustain it, however. Quite frankly, we're burning out staff, specifically teachers, as it relates to having to teach both in-person as well as virtually. You'll note that I changed our schedule a little bit last Thursday and Friday, as well as today, to address the need for, quite frankly, some time off, as well as increased prep time for staff. Knowing that that was not the fix, but it was something that we needed to do, what we're doing now is putting, we're pivoting, and we're coming, we're coming forward with a plan that's going to be adjusted, that'll allow us, hopefully, to keep staff here for a lot longer. That said, I'm going to turn it over to Cory.
So as Craig indicated, we're here to give you an update on the status of our operations as it pertains to our original reopening plan and COVID. So we've been continually monitoring, we're monitoring where we're at as a district, we've been monitoring information and data as it pertains to county numbers and state numbers. So we continue to have a responsibility to provide an exceptional educational environment that's safe and healthy for staff as well as students. We feel like we need to be responsive, and to continue to be responsive, we've been responsive to this date, but we now have a lot more information in front of us, and we're at a point where we naturally and logically need to make an adjustment to what we've got going. Our stakeholders have continually told us that they've appreciated us being strategic, we've been calculated, and we have a plan. So we feel like this is going to take us now to that next phase in our original reopening plan. And at the core of everything that we've done from March to date has been safety, flexibility, and a focus on instruction. And we're going to continue to do that as we move throughout the year. I think it's worth mentioning that our staff have done a phenomenal job. Every single staff member in this district has been focused on students and what's best for students safety-wise, as well as instructionally. But like Craig indicated, the workload is a lot, and it's not sustainable. So we need to make a pivot and an adjustment to that. Families have also been phenomenal, they're not sending their kids to school when they're sick, they're keeping them home if they've, you know, tested positive or are close contact, and they are following every protocol that we've put in place, as well as the county. So hats off to staff and hats off to our community, and I think because of those two things, we've been able to remain open for as long as we have. Here's some information that relates to our trends and our capacity. Of course, we're seeing increased trends in the county, in the state, and in the district. The district continues to remain lower than the county and the state. So weekly, we are monitoring our case rate per 100,000 people. And, for example, this past week, the state was at 59.79 cases per 100,000. Portage County was at 62.17, and the district is at 39.26. So we'll continue to monitor that as we go into the weeks ahead. Our subrate is currently at 79%, that's dropping. That percentage right there is all teaching staff and all special education assistance, which is the largest number of educational assistance that we have, those special ed. You know, we had to close Roosevelt for a couple weeks, and that was due to capacity. We tried to remain open, we monitored throughout the weekend, and we just were not able to keep open because we didn't have the staff and the subs to fill in.
Could I just ask a question? Could you clarify what that means, the subfill rate?
Yep.
On an average of 79%? What does that actually mean?
Sure. So it means that we've only been able to fill 79% of...
That's what I was, I was, I thought so, but I wanted to make sure.
Yep. And then we know that we're going to be seeing the cold and flu season here shortly, and that has us nervous about that subfill rate even more. Because we know that kids are going to get sick, staff are going to get sick, maybe not COVID-related, just the normal cold and flu, and that's going to take more capacity from staff, as well as from subs. And Cory, could you just explain with the 79% fill rate, you know, and if it's dropping, what do we do? Or what does staff do? We have principals that have been subbing a lot, you know, they're not doing their regular principal duties, they're in classrooms subbing. We're having to cancel art, music, FIED, and if we do that, that means a teacher has absolutely no prep throughout the day. So we're doing anything we possibly can. We've had to shift people from building to building, which we don't like to do a lot because, again, then you're intermingling those cohort groups of staff. But we're doing what we can, but we're at a point where we're getting more concerned about that because we know that we're hitting that cold and flu season. Our current instructional models, these are current numbers. So right now, our pre-kindergarten through grade six, we've got about 80% of our students that are in-person, we have about 17% in the flexible e-learning. Seventh through 12th grade, we have about 78% that are in-person, and about 20% that are doing the flexible e-learning. And if you remember, the flexible e-learning was the choice that parents had to determine by quarter if they wanted to be in-person or online. And then the online learning center was the option we gave families, they made a decision for the entire year. So right now, we've got about 2.5% of students K through 12 that are in the online learning center. What's working? Well, we've got about eight weeks in with students, and we've got the traditional model happening, as well as the blended model. And what we're seeing is that student achievement data is the highest for those that are attending in-person, as we thought, but we've got the data now to support that. And we have 79% of our students that are here in a face-to-face environment. So the majority of our students are still coming in-person, and that's a good thing. What isn't...
Cory, could I just ask on that 79%? How is that determined?
That's determined by the number of families that have signed up for flexible...
But I mean, wasn't that achievement like success? Student achievement?
So, oh, student achievement is highest. We took a look at grades, and we took a look at DNF reports and compared the students that were in-person compared to the students that were in flexible, compared to the students that were in the online learning center. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. What's not working? The capacity of our staff. They are, the workload is immense, and it's more than what they can maintain for a long period of time. Teaching both in-person and teaching in a flexible environment, there's just not enough hours in a day to do it. We've got staff that are working early morning, late nights, weekends, and they're feeling really like they're not doing a good job because they've got students at home in a flexible environment that have questions during the day and need answers, but it's difficult for them to do that because they're teaching the in-person. And they're getting pulled to sub when they've got a prep hour. So it's just, it's not sustainable at this point. We've learned that the student achievement is lowest for the students that are in the flexible e-learning, and that data, again, was pulled from grades and DNF reports of students after the first quarter, mid-first quarter. We know that resources, the resources mostly of our staff are just, it's difficult, we, there's just not enough to do for teachers right now to be able to maintain at this rate. So what we've learned is that our existing model needs to be restructured. How? Here's what our plan is going forward. So for pre-kindergarten through grade six, what we would like to do is dedicate staff to take care of just the flexible e-learners, and then allow staff that are in-person just to focus on in-person. How would we do that? I would pull kindergarten through sixth grade, a teacher for kindergarten, first, second, third, all the way through six. And I would do that, I've analyzed numbers across the district, I'm continuing to work with principals and cabinet on that, and we would collapse a section at each grade level, and then the students that that teacher would have had will then get dispersed into the other two homerooms. So we'll have to be strategic about where that's happening and what grades at what schools based on numbers and capacity.
Now, is that, is that students that are on the flexible, but also students that, say, get quarantined for two weeks?
Good question. Gee, I don't know the answer to that. I'm thinking that the students that are quarantined, we need to have further discussion, but where we've landed as of today is that the students that are quarantined would likely still fall under the purview of the classroom teacher if they're an in-person student. However, that's not set in stone. Until we get this other model set up and to see how fluid it is, I'll have to provide more information on that.
I think that was one of the major problems that teachers were telling me.
Well, it is, because, but it's, yeah, it's no different than a student that might need to go on a vacation for two weeks. I mean, we still provide them materials. The issue is, if the in-person teacher is not exactly at the same place as the flexible group with their group of 80 students, they might not align, the lessons might not. So if we can streamline that and try to keep people on the same page, I think, yes, it might be able to happen. So we would use one teacher, we would have one educational assistant, and we would use a floating sub. At the beginning of the year, we hired a floating sub, one sub for each building, just to kind of go in and out of classrooms to help give teachers a break, to use the restroom, to eat, to get a breath during the day, and the intent was for those to go away. We're proposing that those floating subs remain and work in this cohort of three people at each grade level. And we believe at this point that three adults per 80 kids at each grade level should be sufficient. Again, we'll have to continue to monitor that and adjust. If it's too much, we'll send them back to in-person, if it's not enough, then, you know, we'll see what we need to do. But this would be able to happen without hiring additional teachers to do this.
That's per school?
No.
That's per district?
Yep.
So there's more than 80 kids in a grade per district?
No, there's approximately 80 flexible...
80 flexible?
Yep.
Okay.
So like I had mentioned, we would collapse the section based on enrollment and capacity. And what we're proposing is, if we continue in our current model until November 30th, honestly, I'm concerned about that date, but I believe that if we have a plan in place and we have a solution to this, having to teach both, teachers will be able to hang on until Thanksgiving. And then at Thanksgiving, through the Christmas holiday, where we know it's cold and flu, people travel, we're going to ask everybody to shift to e-learning for that three weeks. That will allow teachers to only teach one instructional model for three weeks, so it would be just e-learning. Then during that time, we would identify the sections and the staff, we would create a communication plan to inform staff and students and families, and then we would resume on January 4th in this new model, where there's dedicated staff for flex e-learners and there's dedicated staff for in-person. And we would, at the elementary level, come back five days a week because we wouldn't... Because we wouldn't need the Wednesdays for a planning day for e-learning because we'd have dedicated staff for both models.
Are we still going to be able to buy meals during that period?
Yes. The rationale for the pre-K six solution is it reduces the likelihood of a short and long-term closure due to cold and flu. It allows us time to restructure into this new model to create a communication plan, to determine, you know, we'd ask for teacher volunteers first, once those schools and grade levels are determined. And then if we don't get enough volunteers, we would have to reassign. And it would allow us to work with our community partners because we know that some families, when we go to e-learning for three weeks, it's going to cause some, some stress on some families. So we want to work with, and we've started to create a plan with the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA to create kind of homework centers or childcare centers within the community and within the district to help families that might be in need.
Cory?
Yep.
I just want to, want to go too far.
Yep.
So in January, explain to me what a third grade class would look like in the new plan?
Yep. So if I'm a parent of a third grader, I will have the choice for the remainder of the year to stay in-person for five days a week or go to a flexible e-learning for five days a week. And there would be dedicated staff for each. We wouldn't be asking teachers to do both.
When you say flexible online learning, what do you mean?
It means that teachers would be creating lessons. They would be doing synchronous sessions. They would be creating all of the content via Seesaw or Schoolology.
So it would be all online?
All online.
One or, they can do one or the other?
Yep.
Instead of trying to blend them?
Yep. Yep.
I'm going to think, but I just want to make-
Yep.
I want to be clear.
Yep. 712. This is what our proposal is for 712. Flexible e-learners would return to the blended model or apply to the online learning center. So we know that the flexible at the secondary level is not working as it relates to student achievement. We believe that our secondary kids need to come back and see teachers at least two days a week. And then the remainder three days would still be that e-learning. If there's a family out there that just says, I'd prefer not, they can apply to the online learning center. And we have the capacity for 200 students at that online learning center.
Can they do in-person, five days?
Not five days. We're going to start with just the blended. And then eventually, if the numbers decrease, we'll try to work to get some of our secondary back more than two days. But with, for example, at our secondary buildings, there's just so many kids. We're worried about bringing all kids. So what this means is we would eliminate flexible e-learning for seven through 12 at the semester. However, we still have that online learning center option that they can sign up for or apply to. Again, we would have everybody shift to that e-learning for the three weeks from November 30th to December 23rd. We would again create a communication plan to make sure that we inform students and families. We would work on that application process and allow, you know, families that time to fill out that application and we would work through that. And then we would resume to this new model, different from elementary. Elementary is going to start January 4th, but secondary really needs to finish out the semester. Semesters at the secondary are much more important than they are at the, at the elementary. So they would start actually January 25th. The rationale for the seven through 12 again reduces-
So Cory, I guess just to step back with that. So for the rest of that first semester then, would they be using the existing system?
Yes.
So they would be doing, we would be doing the transition for them on the 25th. But they would be coming back to school on the third? The two days a week or?
They would remain in their current model-
Okay.
Through the end of the first semester. And then starting January 25th, we'd flip to this new model.
All right. But the students, I guess the question I'm asking is we're going to have everybody at home those three weeks, November to December.
Yes.
But the secondary will also be coming back to the building on the third? They'll just be staying in the current model? And then transitioning to the new one at end of?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Thank you.
So can I-
Cory, I have a question.
Yep.
Could the elementary start at the semester as well? It seems like if they all come back right after the holidays, where families have been together and in gatherings and things, that could be problematic.
We talked about that Barb, and here's the concern. I'm concerned that if we do that, teachers again are going to have to do three weeks of teaching both. That's why we went to January 4th. Because once they're done with that e-learning, I think the sooner we can get both instructional models off teachers' plates, the better. We started with the 25th and worked our way back. Just because I don't know that teachers are going to be able to come back and, and be responsible for three more weeks of doing both, honestly.
Is it still open for negotiation about the five days a week? Because it still seems like they've got extra duties and now they won't have that Wednesday prep. And I realize they won't have the e-learning to worry about, but they still have the rest of the week in-person.
Right. We, we also discussed that Barb. We really felt that we should work to try to get those elementary kids back five days a week. And if teachers didn't have both to teach, we felt that giving that Wednesdays back to instruction for kids was, was really beneficial.
I, I just want to ask a question about seven through 12. I'm, I'm afraid I'm missing something. So you're saying that we're, we're going to do the model we're doing now, except for the three weeks in November? And then they'll come back, they'll do the same model they're doing now-
Yep.
Through the end of the semester, and then they'll change into the new model. What's different about the new model from what they're doing now?
The new model, more kids will be back in-person two days a week for secondary.
So more, tell, just to tell, tell me about that.
We're basically taking flexible, the flexible e-learning option out for seven through 12.
Okay.
And we're asking kids to come back face-to-face two days a week, depending on what cohort they're in. But we have the OLC, the Online Learning Center, as an option-
Okay.
If there's some reason that a student cannot come back two days a week.
Okay, okay. And then the, the, the three days a week that kids are doing online, those are being taught by this dedicated teacher that is, that is not, that-
Good question, Trish.
Yeah.
Secondary, no. Elementary, yes.
Okay.
So secondary is still going to have the Wednesdays off because they're in a cohort. Remember, they have A through L and M through Z.
Right.
And secondary teachers are going to continue doing both. But we're hoping that, well, they won't do both because they won't be flexible. There's just the online learning center and in-person. So they won't have, have, have both.
So Cory, I, I've got two questions here. What happens, you know, because we're going, how are parents going to be addressed? Who are already upset about the flexible e-learning, the flexible learning changes? And now they want to now move their students into, you know, strictly just in school? Is that going, that, that, and then that's going to affect, you know, how many students are now going to be in the classrooms, right? So there's a possibility that parents may now choose for their students to go into, back into the classroom. That's going to increase our class sizes? Is that, how, how do we, you know, like what are we going to do about that if that should happen?
Yep. So we've had conversations at the secondary level. And Connie, feel free to chime in here. We feel that if we remain in the cohort model, that we are still going to be able, if-
Oh, I'm sorry. This is K through six. I'm so sorry Cory.
Oh, okay. So your question was?
So how, how are, what's going to happen? If parents who, you know, some parents are already upset about the flexible learning change? And now that, and some may now want to move their kids to in-person? You know, so if the number of kids, we already have a strictly just e-learning from the elementary kids from K through six. If some of those families decide to just go to all-in classroom and we're going to be doing five days a week, that's going to increase our class sizes.
I can answer that. We, right now, we asked families to let us know what their intent was for second quarter. And this is, this is preliminary because we're analyzing the data. There is less than 15% that have said they want to come back. And when you spread that out over nine buildings and multiple grade levels, it's very few kids that have said that they're going to come back.
And then just a follow-up on that. I think I asked you all before. How, if they are in, if they are in a blended model, they can decide to go to an e-learning mid-quarter? But if they're in a e-learning, they cannot decide to go into the blended model until the quarter ends, correct?
Yes. We, we've asked for families to make that determination to this point by quarter. But with the new model, we are going to ask families to make the decision for the year, for the remainder of the year. So we won't have kids going back and forth.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions?
And just a quick question. I, can you just kind of talk about the online learning center? How does that differ from the, from e-learning and how is it similar to e-learning?
Sure. I'll start and then I'm going to let Connie chime in because she's more in tune with the OLC. Basically, we collaborate with the Wisconsin E Network. And they have teachers, it's a different curriculum, but they have designated teachers through WEN that, that teach that curriculum. So it's different in that with flexible, our teachers were teaching the curriculum and it was our curriculum. Same standards, different curriculum. And with WEN and the online learning center, it's, it's separate. And, and they've got designated teachers to do that.
Our, our online learning center at SPASH has been in operation for 10 years. That program has mainly been for students to pick up a course here and there, whether it is for credit recovery or they needed to pick up a class online because there was schedule conflict. Or there was just an incredibly interesting class in online center that kids wanted to pick up. We pivoted our online learning center to pick up more full-time students. So right now, if a student were to choose, if a student or family were uncomfortable coming back to the book environment, which as Cory mentioned, all of the mid-quarter grade data shows that the most successful students at mid-quarter were those that were in a blended environment. So we're going to encourage that, but we know that there are going to be students and families that need that full-time online learning center. They would go in the online learning center curriculum and courses are on our website. There's numerous courses that are either taught by, as Cory mentioned, the Wisconsin E Network, which would be students outside of our district. But we already have 34 teachers within our district at the secondary level that teach within the online learning center as an above and beyond that they've been doing for years. So our kids, if you were to choose the online learning center, you would choose your courses like you would if you were attending SPASH. Some of those courses might be taught by SPASH teachers or Ben PJ teachers. And some might be taught by Wisconsin E Network teachers. So you can't guarantee that the curriculum would exactly match what the students would have if they would be attending in a blended model at the secondary level.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. I'm sorry. I have a few questions yet about elementary in particular. Did you get feedback from any of the teachers when you were planning the change?
Yep. Actually, this came from the instructional leaders district-wide who represent a unit of teachers within each building. So this, this idea actually came, came from them.
Okay. And then how, how would the specials, like music and art, how would those change at that elementary level?
Yep. We are going to have to work out, you know, what the specials are going to look like. We are going to have to work out special ed, you know, students that have IEPs and 504s. So this is just really a, a general overview. There's, there's still a lot to work out. But I feel that with that three-week, you know, just focused on e-learning and the time between now and January 4th, when we would start this, we've got some time to work out those logistics. And I would plan to definitely keep the board up to date with those as we continue to work through this.
I think I'm having the biggest problem with the five days a week thing. You know, I hear that they, the kids are with the teachers for lunch and for breakfast and recess when it's crummy weather and during their specials. And I think they still are going to need that time. It, it feels like you're taking even more, you're taking away their prep.
I understand. I, you know, that's something definitely we can continue to, to monitor Barb. And we'll definitely take that concern and have discussion as we, as we go about the days ahead. And, and one thing to note, we do have a staff Q and A at 8:30 on Wednesday, where we're going to share this plan. And then we have a parent Q and A at 6 o'clock on Thursday. So again, we'll answer those questions. We'll listen to what people have to say and, you know, continue to be responsive to that. Okay.
Cory, a question. How, how did have, how are teachers and EAs being identified as to who will be teaching K through six exclusively with e-learning?
Yep. Again, what I will have to do, we'll have to make a decision based on numbers of students and sections at each building and the capacity. Once we've determined the school and the grade at each school, where the section is going to come from, we'll ask for volunteers. And then if we don't get volunteers, we will have to reassign. And if we have to do that, we will try to make reassignments so that there's not a lot of disruption to a lot of other students and staff. Okay, I'm going to jump into the 712 rationale. So again, safety. It reduces the likelihood of short and long-term closures during the cold and flu season. It will provide time to complete semester one with the flexible e-learning option in place, while also giving families time to consider options to return to blended or apply to the online learning center. And then it allows in-person teachers to focus on in-person instruction and online teachers to focus on online instruction. Student achievement for the flexible e-learners at mid-quarter, like we had mentioned, was very concerning. So the existing structure is really not working for students like it may have in the spring or what we had anticipated coming into the year. And we feel again, like this is just a natural progression for reopening schools for learning. Some possible considerations. We feel like the benefits of this would move us toward an appropriate teacher workload. It would maximize engagement, achievement and growth for students. It would respond to the current climate. Staff are telling us and we've seen it. They're tired, they're, they're, they're working diligently, but we just cannot and they cannot sustain what we've asked them to do for much longer. Proactively responds to the up- Proactively responds to the upcoming cold and flu season. And it requires synchronous lessons and check-ins that add additional accountability that students are asking for and families are asking for. Some potential concerns, which may or may not come to fruition are, you know, support staff. During that three-week e-learning, how are we going to utilize our support staff? We know we want to still continue to deliver meals. We know that there's still lessons where we need help to, to create. So, but what does that look like? We've got those logistics to figure out. It does place an additional burden on families for the three weeks, but like we mentioned, we plan to continue to work with Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA and other community partners to provide support for that. It provides, you know, we've got to make sure that we're providing the services for students with 504s or IEPs, which we'll continue to do. There could be a loss of student engagement. There could be the potential of a decrease enrollment or increase, but there, there's always that potential. It could have a financial impact. And then, you know, we think that this is going to help staff, but you know, are we sure? Not until we actually get in it and, and see what's going on and get some feedback from our staff. To wrap things up, this is what the schedule adjustment would look like. So between now and November 25th, we would maintain our current instructional model. We would start our communication plan for students, families and staff. And we would start to work out what that application structure would look like for the online learning center. November 30th to December 23rd, all students would be in the e-learning format. We would work on the, the sections to be collapsed and the staff that would be affected. And we would be notifying and asking for volunteers. We would finalize and, and work on the homework centers and the childcare support for families that might need it. And we would be asking staff to be doing all of their e-learning instruction from their classrooms, unless they have something extenuating that they would work out with administration or their building principal. January 4th, pre-K through six would come back, you know, in-person or in the new flex model. And here, we've got the five days a week. We'll continue to monitor that. We would transition students to return to, to in-person for those that have, have designated that option and the flex e-learning for those.
Cory?
Yep.
Do you anticipate having to bus students to different schools?
No.
They're going to stay in their same school?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep. January 4th for seven through 12, seven through 12 blended model students would return to classes with their cohort, similar to what they're doing right now on January 4th. And the flexible e-learners would finish out the semester in flexible. And then starting on January 25th, they would return to either blended or the online learning center for grades seven through 12.
And, and just for, yeah, for clarification, the blended for high school is they would continue cohort A is going to be there Monday, Tuesday, and they're going to be e-learning Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Cohort B is going to be Thursday, Friday, e-learning Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, at least to begin the semester. And if we're seeing some positive trends with COVID numbers that might allow some additional in-person, the district's going to continue to monitor that and take a look at that monitor that is removing a lot.
Ideally, we'll be able to eventually go to three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday for cohort A. And then the following week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for cohort B. That increases a day. And ideally, you know, we don't know what this brings. In a perfect world, at the end of third quarter, we're bringing our kids back to finish the school year. Now granted, there's a lot that's going to happen between now and then, and that may not occur. But eventually, we're planning, we're, we're planning to keep our kids in school as long as we can. And eventually, we'll be planning to bring our kids back. We don't know when that is. But in a perfect world, we would end this school year with our kids all back in school to prepare us for next year. Whether or not we'll get there, who knows? That is not what we're presenting tonight. Trust me, if it comes to that, we'll have plenty more opportunities.
Cory, I'm, I'm missing something here. Right now, the students are doing, and the cohorts are doing Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Nope. If you have a last name from A to L, you go Monday, Tuesday in-person.
Right.
And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is e-learning. If your last name is M-
B days of e-learning?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Because of the Wednesday?
Yep.
Okay. And then it switches the letters now?
Yep.
So what's the difference between that and that January change?
So right now, there are still some families that don't want to do that, two days in-person, three days e-learning. They're doing all flexible e-learning.
Oh, okay.
So we're taking that option away.
I knew they were doing that. So you're taking that away, only you're going to have that online learning center.
Yep.
Do you have enough, is there enough room in that online learning center for the people who?
We think so. Dana Breed, who, who is responsible for that, as well as John Volendorf and Connie have, have indicated that we feel there's like 200 additional spots that we can-
Okay.
Yep.
Isn't that a virtual thing? They're in school with those kids?
No, those students are online.
Okay.
Yep.
So can I?
So I-
Yeah.
Trish was asking a question, Anne, so we'll have Trish ask and then we'll turn to you.
So I, I guess I just want to say, I'm really glad you guys have come up with this because I have a deep concern about our teachers and how they're doing. But, but I also, this is a lot. I wish we had gotten this in the packet or even like this afternoon's, we could have looked at it. So just kind of, this is mentally just a lot of pieces. And, and I'm glad you're doing the public informational sessions because I think that more will be fleshed out and that's great. But I, I gotta tell you, and I, and I'm really glad that you're doing the, the thing with the one teacher teaching each grade and then the kids, well, they're not going to be moved physically, but they'll be moved virtually, those kids that are doing entirely online. And, and I'm talking about pre-K to six. Those kids will be moved to a new teacher, but they'll, but, but it'll, it will relieve our ongoing teachers. It will relieve the, the building teachers from so much work, so much extra work. That's wonderful. And I, and I'm really glad you're doing that. But I, you know, I'm kind of struggling with closing down from November to December. We're all, we, we have put our kids through so many changes and so many different types of learning. And now we're talking about putting them at home again. And parents are, my guess is, parents are just now getting a rhythm and a routine and this is how we're doing things. And now we're going to throw the kids all back into the home again. And, you know, when it comes to the K four to six, there's a big part of me that says, you know what? That's a brilliant model of what's coming after January. Why can't we do that right after Thanksgiving?
I, we can't get it set up and ready to go, honestly, and a communication plan. I, I'm worried about that. I, it's too much. And honestly, I mean, we could get shut down before that. Just like, you know, we had to do at Roosevelt. So I think if, if teachers can hold on until Thanksgiving and then just focus on one, it's going to allow us to put up a plan and model together that will be sustainable long-term. Is it ideal? No. But I think that if we give families enough time to adjust and adapt, we've got families that are already traveling over the holidays. I think if at any point in time, if we have to do it, that's the time to do it.
Yeah. I, I mean, I can see your point. I can see that. I just, I'm, I'm ready to get kids back into school.
We're all concerned about that. I think I've asked Cory a dozen times, you know, can we, can we do that sooner? And I get the same response and I understand, we just can't do it. We went to, Cory, Brian and I, Casey went to Skyward, the old building, last Friday. It's about our second time there. That's a consideration to move all of these staff members to.
Oh, okay.
We're going to have 21 or so staff members and we've got to get that particular area set up with technology. There's just a lot that has to get done. And at the end of the day, I can't guarantee you, we're not going to shut down before then. I'm talking to my colleagues right now and we aren't, everyone is making, starting to make changes. And I'm hearing from, from many schools, just hanging on right now, Craig, that's all we're doing. I don't know if we'll make it to Thanksgiving. And it's the same thing. It's, it's the, it's staffing. And, and if we don't do something, we won't make it to Thanksgiving because I think this model, once people really wrap their head up, head around it in terms of staff, I think that'll give them, I, I'm, we're hoping a little light at the end of the tunnel that there's going to be a change and doggone it, I can make it to Thanksgiving. If that doesn't happen and we start to get additional sub-issues, because quite frankly, teachers just aren't doing well, whether it's mentally or emotionally, they're just flat out burnt out, we aren't going to be able to, to fill our, our seats and we're going to shut down school.
You know, one other thing that is a benefit of that, and a, is a letter I got today and I forwarded to you is that people go home, they visit relatives and things like that, it's best to keep them away for three weeks, you know, after Thanksgiving and let that work itself out. It's a good time to do it, you know?
And I, I- If I could mention something, that, one of the things we worry about as well is, is when we get into the cold and flu season, is the capacity of our buildings, our students coming into the office when they're ill, is it COVID? Is it the cold and flu? The symptoms look similar. We must be spending a lot of our capacity, our staff, trying to determine something that we're not experts at. And then sending lots of kids home because they're probable cases and they may be the cold, it might be cold or flu, it might be COVID, as well as staff. So like Craig said, I think, given that that, we know that is coming at this time of the year, we're just, we might be spending so much time and energy trying to figure that out versus teaching kids and keeping kids at home and, and safe.
And I certainly know Dr. Fauci, but let's not underestimate what deer hunting and then followed up by Thanksgiving in terms of gatherings, the results of that, following Thanksgiving, those three weeks leading up to Christmas. I don't, you know, our numbers are going up in, in Portage County significantly now. You know, none of us have a crystal ball, but that could be a very difficult time in Wisconsin.
Anne, did you have a question?
Yeah, my question was regarding seven through 12, if they choose to do the e-learning and they have to go to the OLC. Does the OLC have classes appropriate for our special ed or our students with IEPs?
Anne, as I mentioned, we would be really choosing courses because we have already 34 of our own district teachers that are teaching with the online learning center. We would be strategically placing special education students, ELL students, at-risk students, preferably in those courses taught by our local teachers so that those teachers can provide the necessary accommodations, modifications, as well as utilizing some of our reading teachers and other supports. So that for those teachers in our district, they have seen the course before and they can most adequately provide accommodations and supports for those students versus a curriculum that nobody has seen before through WEN.
Okay. Then a follow-up question. You had said that you all would work with them to pick out the courses that are appropriate. Will the family, will the school be working with the families to be choosing the classes on the, in, on OLC that will be appropriate for each student then? Or is it kind of like, you know, if you're at the Tech or University, you do online classes, you, you sign up for your own classes?
Anne, first of all, there will have students and families that want to stay with the online learning center for the rest of the year, would complete an application process, which would allow us to determine, A, this is a student and family that is very much interested in staying online and then what are their immediate needs? And then just, just like they already are assigned counselors at the secondary building, that counselor would then reach out with the family and the student to determine the appropriate courses to best meet their needs, A, and, and set them up for success.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Cory?
Yep.
Cory, this is Barb. Will the elementary building still be deep cleaned then on Wednesdays?
We will work out a deep cleaning protocol. What that will look like, Barb, is yet to be determined, but we'll still do some deep cleaning. If we're in five days a week, it could, it, you know, it can't happen like it did with four days, so it would have to be different.
So Cory noted for the board that, you know, you know, just as happened in June, we received the planned presentation. And then it was, then it was the next two months, work out all the details. And that's really where we are with this right now. That it's being presented to the board. We, we talked about bringing it to the board for our regular board meeting, but that's in two weeks. And so Craig and Cory and Edmund wanted to get it out to the board as quick as possible. It's going to give the board another two meetings, our meeting in November and our meeting in December, for us to get continual information and up, more comprehensive updates, both for the board and for the community. It's also going to allow for these listening sessions to take place with staff as well as with parents. And, you know, I, I saw personally changes in accommodations that were made as a result of questions and, and new information that, that will be coming out of those meetings. So I encourage board members, if you have questions between now and the next board meeting about what's been presented tonight, please get in touch with, with Cory and Craig. Because it's really important, and, and I ask that of the community as well, because it's really important that administration is hearing directly what, what might be helpful for all concerned as we move to this initial kind of transition time and then creating that ongoing system that's hopefully going to be more sustainable for the district through this school year. You know, absent us being able to bring the kids back, you know, more substantively at seven through 12. So, you know, again, the, the broad parameters of what's happening, the administration has, is indicating to us tonight, you know, this is the direction the district's going to be moving forward in. But all those details and all questions and concerns, you know, that's what, you know, administration's going to be looking to address and tweak between, you know, throughout this process.
Cory, oh, sorry Anne, go ahead.
I was just, just a quick question. Can we get a copy of the PowerPoint? Just so that we can kind of get the, the details of what you all had discussed.
Absolutely. I'll get that sent out, Anne.
Thank you.
And Sarah, I'm assuming that, that'll be up on the website for the public?
Yep, I just posted it.
All right, perfect.
I may add, I'm not anticipating this, but in the event the state would shut down schools prior to that, that obviously would have some impact on this as well.
The information-
Cory, could we survey our teachers and see what they think of this plan?
Barb, we, yeah, we could. I mean, we've gone round and round about that. What I'm hearing is if we can just fix the problem of them not having to teach both instructional models, that's what they're, that's what they're most concerned about. But again, we, we definitely could. But I'm worried that if we do that, we are not going to have enough time to survey, gather- enough time to survey, gather the data, analyze the data, and get a plan in place. I don't know that our teachers can hold on for much longer, and that's gonna take time to do.
The informational meetings, are those Zoom meetings?
Yeah.
Are those posted on the website? So, if we wanted to listen in, we could log into that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll double-check on that.
Yeah, good. And I just, yeah, I just wanna say, yeah, go ahead, Sarah, go ahead.
Sorry, Trish, staff received the first invitation to those last week, and then as soon as your meeting concludes, I'll hit send with a copy of the presentation, a link to your meeting, and then an invitation to families, and then we'll share that through our other communication channels as well.
So, Trish is asking of board members if they would like to be part of those Zoom meetings.
Oh, sure, just register.
If we can get, yeah, if we can get the information out to the board as well, that would be great, that would be helpful.
If you are interested, please let Carlin know, because if we have a majority of the board, then we will post that.
Oh, yep.
Oh, boy.
And then, please note that if it does get posted, because we have the majority of the vote, or the board, I would greatly appreciate the dialogue between the administration and the staff, and the administration and the public, and that board members. Otherwise, we could have a-
Absolutely. I just kinda wanna-
But to certainly listen in, absolutely.
Yeah. And I just wanted to say-
And that would be of great value.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm really glad you guys are doing this. I've been kind of waiting to see what the next iteration is, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, we gotta get the kids, I mean, now it looks like the data is bearing that out, that the kids need, they need to be in school. And I'm just really glad we're, you know, that you're making these moves, and it seems very well thought out, so I'm-
About two weeks ago, there, it was rumored that the governor was gonna shut down the state last week, Monday. And, I mean, it was rumored to the point where I was concerned, so I called John Bales, our executive director. He got back to me and said that he received several calls throughout the entire state hearing the same thing. The light went on. I don't think the governor will do that, at least he's not planning on it. However, the numbers in Wisconsin are significantly increasing. It made us really start to think, what if the governor does shut the schools down? Are we ready for that? Because that could happen, it could happen, I've heard, November 1st. Again, all rumor and speculation. So, this is preparing us, quite frankly, for after the holidays to the second semester. It's also getting ahead of the issue in terms of whether or not we just flat-out have to cancel because we're told we have to, or if we believe our numbers increase over the next couple of weeks and we can't make it to Thanksgiving. It puts us in a better position, and we're better prepared.
The, I guess, the one other thing for me is, you know, going into September, the plan that was created and has been moving forward made so much sense for so many really good reasons. If students were coming in and out from e-learning to a classroom, that they would be able to maintain that same trajectory with the kids that were in, I mean, there were all sorts of really solid reasons for it. It just created really significant substantial pressure on staff that I don't think anyone was anticipating, and it really became, it's just no longer sustainable, and so that need for that transition. But it's also, I think, moving into this in September, I think all of us were hoping, I mean, we all have COVID fatigue, you know, I think we were all hoping this was gonna go away by October, and the reality is, the reality is, we're gonna be dealing with this for the rest of the school year. I mean, that's just, that's just a reality when you take a look at, on a national level, what's happening with vaccine, what's happening. And so, the ability to learn from the pressure points that we've got now and use that knowledge and information to create a better, more sustainable system going forward, you know, it's just time, it's time.
I'd like to add that in August, going into September, I didn't think we'd still be in school, noted my colleagues. I think we all felt that we're gonna, we're gonna do the old good college try, and we aren't gonna make it through October. And we're here, and actually, it's pretty consistent, at least throughout the state of Wisconsin, our schools' numbers are lower than the communities' numbers, because we follow the rules. We have set forth rules and we follow them. Our communities don't necessarily follow the rules. What's interesting, when you talk about fall athletics, there was a couple cancellations. For the most part, fall athletics went very well. And I'll specifically talk about the Valley Conference. The school that had the biggest problem was the school that was 100% virtual. Cool figure. Wausau had to close their football programs down. Their kids were not in school. The kids that were in school were more successful in that situation in athletics than the school that was not in session. We follow the rules, we wear masks, we social distance. I think that says something.
So, we will have our next-
Any other questions? Let's make sure we cover all our bases here.
Any other questions tonight?
We will have a couple community, or community of staff meeting, we'll bring this forward at our next board meeting, as Meg said, and we will continue to monitor our numbers, and if something changes between now and our board meeting, we certainly will communicate effectively.
So, item C is just meeting dates, times, et cetera. Our next school board meeting will be November 9th, and then we'll be having a board meeting on December 14th. We now, I need, we're gonna be entering into closed session if the board so approves, and I am looking for a motion to enter into closed session 1985 parent 1 parent C and 1985 parent 1 parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session specifically for the purpose of discussing 7-1 2020 to 6-30 2021 compensation strategies and offers for SPAEA and Teamsters, and also closed session 1985 parent 1 parent C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to discuss compensation for non-represented staff and administrators. Do I have a motion by Evil? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trish. Could you call the roll?
Ms. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. Evil.
Yes.
Mr. Pope.
Yes.
Ms. Portson. Ms. Portson. Ms. Wa.
Yes.
Ms. Baker.
Yes.
Ms. Earler.
Yes.
And motion passes.
Okay, so, we will take about a 10-minute break to get the room set up.